All right, thank you, everybody. I'm going to call the Wednesday, February 12, 2020 Planning Board Meeting to order. It's 7:00 PM. We'll go around the board, starting to my right to introduce, but before we do that, we actually have some people in attendance tonight. So if you haven't already, please just sign in when you have a moment and when we open a public hearing, if you're here to speak, please come up to the desk and state your name and address, and then we'll be able to go from there. So I'll start over here.
Ian McKinnon, alternate.
Leanne Gass, alternate.
Robert Davies, alternate.
Trace Bascom, alternate.
Tyler Eaton, Select Board.
Edward Beal.
Not, not.
That was a... Not an alternate. Susan Mooney.
Dari Anderson.
Joe Plough.
Stephanie Casella, SRPC.
Ms. Bascom is not an alternate, she has a folly seated board.
My last meeting though.
See, we set the last time. I'm going to see Ms. Gass for Mr. Grotnice, she'll be participating in voting tonight, and Mr. Davies and Mr. McKinnon will both be participating but will not be voting. So we're going to take the cases and everything in order on the agenda. The first item on the agenda is a continuation, a third continuation request for case 19-011-SUB. Application from Jeffrey and Susan Paradise for a four-lot subdivision on scenic road which may include tree cutting, identified as tax map 58 lot 7-1, originally heard on November 13, 2019, continued to December 11. Due to omission on the scenic road designation, we have a request from the applicant to continue that. Joanna, is that? I didn't see that in here. Did they specify?
Yes.
Thank you.
Twenty-sixth. Twenty-sixth.
And the request specifically is from the applicant's representative, Mr. Franklin, the surveyor, in order to give GOV Environmental Services LLC time to complete their environmental report, which is something we had requested and required. And they've requested continuation extension to the February 26 meeting. Discussion and/or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request for a continuation for case number 19-011-SUB from this meeting to February 26, 2020 at 7:00 PM as requested.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Is there any other? What's on the agenda for the 26 right now?
Nothing that I remember. Nothing else.
And so what is our timeframe left on that?
Do you mean have they reached their limit, their limit?
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, 7-0. Next item on the agenda is case 20-001-SUB. Application from Beal's Associates, PLLC, for a five lot. Property owned by Laurel Miller is located on Mill Pond Road in Nottingham, Hampshire, identified as tax map 24 lot 41-002. Welcome to the table.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Christian Smith, and I'm here with Beal's Associates. Paul Lang, Lightning Constructions, is here with me tonight, and I understand that Mrs. Miller is also in the office. So if you would like me to just give a quick and dirty rundown of what the proposal is here, I'd be happy to do that.
Yep, just a quick synopsis or summary first, and then we'll act on the application.
Right. So essentially, what we've got, as you can see, is a proposed five-lot drainage subdivision. Two of the lots will take their drainage on Mill Pond Road, and three of the lots will take their drainage on Kelsey Road. We have done all the required test pits, we've gotten the wetlands eliminated. The report from GOV Environmental should be packaged specific to that. And that is largely the quickest analysis of the plan. You can get it in the form of the application.
And staff, had a chance to review the application? Any concerns there?
A couple changes to the plan itself. Some typos, a couple things I'd like to see in the legend and identified on the plan. The two things that I flagged as possible issues was the lack of a hydrogeological study. It is in the aquifer protection district. I guess there was a meeting that occurred, I wasn't at the meeting, between staff and the applicant, or the applicant's reps, where that was discussed. I'm not sure the outcome of that. And then just the proposed driveways aren't delineated, so I just want to make sure that they're not going to go through the wetlands.
But nothing that would prevent the application from being accepted as complete?
The aquifer protection district hydrogeological study could, depending on what the outcome of that meeting was. Not sure if anybody was there.
All right. So I guess that's it. I wasn't part of that meeting, so.
Yeah, no, unfortunately Dirk was in at the code enforcement officer work.
Yep.
And essentially, there are a number of things at play. I mean, you know, that, not the entirety of the parcel is in the aquifer zone. You know, we will have two minimum of the lot resulting septic systems will be outside the aquifer protection zone. There could be a third, we have room to do that if necessary. And really, what it boiled down to was, you know, we could do a two-lot subdivision, or carve out two new lots on, let's just pick a road, pick Kelsey Road, carve out two lots on Kelsey. That would result in a three-lot subdivision, which would not require in the hydrogeological study. And then come back and do the other three off Mill Pond. And again, you know, we're still at three lots, four of that remaining land. So it just doesn't make sense. And to further that, you know, we've got wetlands inside the aquifer protection district, which is very uncharacteristic of aquifers. They have very deep, coarse sands in general, and that's not what you'll find in the bulk of the test pits. In fact, we had a few failing test pits that failed a 16-inch, excuse me, a 24-inch to water table and 36-inch to a restricted layer in the soil. And all of the failed test pits actually happened within the map aquifer protection zone. So that's what we came away with. Essentially, the meeting was largely to discuss the opportunity to throw the zoning board adjustment and get a relief to the three-acre lots. And they didn't feel, at the end of the day, they didn't have any comments that would go through, so we went back. That's essentially where we assumed we are not having to, excuse me, a hydrogeological study, because it's a, it would be tens of thousands of dollars of money just flushed down the water.
All right. So I think as a board, if that's the only item basically on the application that is the biggest concern with acceptance of completion or not, that's something we could address during the actual review and public hearing phase and any possible approval and conditions. So at this time, I think we're looking for a motion for either acceptance as complete or not.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept case 20-001-SUB. Application from Beal's Associates for the LLC, excuse me, for a five lot subdivision located on Mill Pond Road as complete.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, 7-0. All right. So now we open the public hearing phase, so now we can get into more of the details. So now, Mr. Smith, if you have additional items you want to discuss about the actual application?
Yeah, sure. Mr. Chairman, I guess the first thing I would like to do is hand out a waiver request that in conversations with the City of Riddell Planner came to our attention tonight. We do have, which I will also provide the board with, a copy of the NRCS soils. But the waiver would just be not to do that, basically what prevents us from having to digitize these onto the design plans. So, you know, not a real party issue to me one way or the other, whether it's approved or not, but I will provide the board with the waiver request and a copy of the NRCS soils that we do have for the project. I am not sure how many of these I ran, so we may need to share.
Thanks. We can do that.
Yes, we have a few more people here since the last time you've been in.
I will leave that with you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
You can get it tampered, and I are good with sharing.
Oh, okay, good. Make sure the audience can see that as well. So again, Mr. Chairman, what we're looking at here are essentially five lots. One will contain the existing house and well and the outbuildings that exist on the parcel. The second one off Mill Pond Road is here. And to quickly address Stephanie's comments specific to the driveway, we have no issue putting it on the plan, but the driveways were not encroaching to the wetland or the wetland bumper. That's absolutely not our intention. And the other three have, take their drainage on Kelsey Road. And you can see, I'm trying to highlight with a yellow pencil on this plan, the aquifer protection boundary, so it would be all of this area here. And again, Lot 1's septic system will without question be outside the zone. Lot 2, we have acceptable test pits right on the zone, so we can actually design the septic system along here, parallel with that contour. And similarly, for Lot 4, it may require one additional test pit, but we could do that lot as well, again, to get basically three of those septic systems for the rolling lots out of the aquifer protection zone. And again, I'll reiterate, we have a wetland feature here, a small wetland feature here that's mostly offsite, and then another finger that is up on the top of 5. And if you look at the overall map, this is actually a mapped aquifer that connects to and surrounds Nottingham Lake. This is the very tailing end of the zone, and I can't tell you exactly how far it goes off the tail. You know, again, we, you can see, I highlighted on this plan the failed test pits in red. We have one there, we have four here, and, you know, we were getting water tables in some of those at 16 inches. It's just not reflective of aquifer soils. And we can go into more detail on that if need be. But largely, that's what I have. We're happy to put in, you know, potential curve cuts, which would obviously follow through with the driveways. At the end of the day, we can get to a point of full construction permits for these building permits, I should say. And I could go through very quickly the other points in Stephanie's memo. So with regard to 2B, one, I've already handed out the waiver request, and with regard to 2B, we have not shown the driveway locations aside from the existing one. They will definitely not go through the wetland, but we would be happy to show some potential curve cuts on the plan. We did notice that the surveyor's plans and the tile block do spell Kelsey, K-E-S-L-E-Y, so we'll get him to correct that. Specific to 3B, we will coordinate with the assessing department if the board needs that adequate to find the actual map and lot numbers to put on the report sheet before it goes into registry. We will also coordinate with the land surveyor to include the right-of-way dimensions for the existing road, as well as show the proposed monuments, which are basically just going to be at the new building corners, either on the right-of-way or internally. Label the existing fences, which I can point out to you, those are the lines with the little patches on them that he shows there. And I think that ended up on our plan as well. And we will coordinate with the embellished building area and building envelope area just to be resistant to that.
So I skipped a step in our process, and I think it's fine, we'll just take a step back.
Oh, yeah.
About regional impact or not. So just because this is close to, especially because it's close to a border, generally we're supposed to discuss it and have a motion whether or not we deem this an application of regional development or not, based on the RSA and other language. My opinion is that it is not, but we can all discuss, and then we should just have a motion just to make it formal to you. Sorry, I didn't hear you.
I concur that I don't feel it is a regional impact development either, based on the RSA the way I was reading it.
So if we don't have any further discussion on that, I'd accept a motion to either declare it a regional impact or that is not of regional impact.
All right.
Chairman, I move that case number 20-001-SUB does not qualify as an application with regional impact.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, 7-0. Apologize for that, everyone. Let me see, one more thing. And I apologize, Steph, I should have went to you as well for any additional comments on your review. I know we discussed, Mr. Smith discussed most of those. Was there anything else that was left off that you'd like to bring to our attention?
Nope, I think we've kind of covered it all. It was a pretty straightforward application.
So we'll let the board ask some questions of the applicant before we open the public hearing, to those that are here. Anybody can go first, or I can go through some items that I had.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of comments from Mr. Smith. Christian, when you presented this waivers asking for, that request that we don't do a soil study, are you looking for indication that it's poorly drained soils or very poorly drained soils?
No, if you look through the GOV Environmental Report, they detail that the only wetlands that they found on site are poorly drained, and there was an area of ponding, which fortunately they were out there during the correct time to be able to do a thorough pool assessment as well. And they did not find any egg masses or anything to indicate that we're using that for the ground. So no, all, the, just blatant code says that you will either put county soils map, you know, soils on your plan or do HITS. You know, of course, if we were embarking on a drainage analysis or something like that, where we're creating new road and needed best treatment, best management treatment practices, we would have without question deferred to HITS mapping, but as, that's not part of our equation here. You know, I provided the board with the NRCS mapping and report. It just, you know, like I said, it doesn't really give me any heartburn in a way the other way, whether this fails or not, we can certainly take the data that we have, blow it up in our AutoCAD system, and trace the counter soils on.
Well, my question came because you have a 50-foot setback and a 75-foot setback, four wetlands on two of these lots, and the 75-foot does come into the buildable area. So I was, didn't know if this was poorly drained or just...
It's poorly drained, and 75 is actually the septic system setback.
I see.
Yeah. That's just the differentiation between the building setback and the septic system setback.
That was my question. Thank you.
I was going to say, I had the same question, and so normally, we see that label too as either poorly drained or very poorly drained. I looked at the note, it's not specified there either, so if that can be added in, just to make it clear for everyone. Going back to the hydrogeologic study, so that kind of comes up in two different places. So one is that where we have control of it, which is the subdivision ordinance, but the second spot is the zoning ordinance, which we have less control over, depending on the way it's written. And in the aquifer district, it specifically mentions that the hydrogeologic study within the aquifer protection district shall be required for developments involving the subdivision or three lots or greater. So because of that shall, in my opinion, it takes it out of our hands and makes it a zoning. If it should, then we would have kind of...
I think, again, where we got with the code enforcement officer and the chairman was that, you know, this could be done in two separate month applications.
It couldn't. It would have a, because it's the same lot, it would have a four-year hold on it for any future subdivision.
Would be a four-year hold for that?
You could, all subdivisions have a four-year hold after, after they're completed.
Then I guess the other remedy would be to, you know, based on the science and what we have, is just to go see the zoning board adjustment?
Yeah, that's my interpretation, just because, again, it's in two spots. We have the subdivision, the subdivision ordinance, which we make, we can build waivers into and such, but the fact that it's in the zoning ordinance and it's a shall, that's a, to me, is a hand tire for us.
Right. I just, I think that, you know, because the entire parcel is not within that district, I think that's where, you know, and the double front of the road is where we're coming to that conversation with the code enforcement officer back. I think it was made in 2000.
I think the way that the verbiage on the aquifer districts is, is that it states if any part of the parcel falls into it, that the ordinance shall apply. That's all right. Just wanted to make sure. I like when I have this on a computer better, because you can search it, but...
It's on the bottom of page eight.
It is.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I thought there was a spot specifically that labeled, indicated that's about any part of the parcel.
It does mention no more than 10% of a single lot.
Yeah, it's...
Maybe rendered permanent.
There's that too. There's obviously some additional...
Yeah, that's specific to the purpose.
Some additional restrictions that apply, so I'd have to go back and double-check the full thing, but my interpretation of it is that if the, if part of the parcel is in the aquifer protection district, then stricter requirements apply.
Might that be in the subdivision section?
It could be.
Yeah, because I have the entirety of the zoning section applied here. It is silent to that.
The only, yeah, the only thing it mentions partially in that is that the, where'd The only thing, the district boundary is 3A. The aquifer protection district is the zoning district, which imposes additional requirements or restrictions to those underlying district. In all cases, the more restrictive requirements shall apply, so. Again, I feel like it's kind of outside this board's purview for the zoning part, so if you do go for a variance on that, I would think you would want to build in a variance for the zoning ordinance and for the subdivision ordinance part of it, that we capture both at the same time, don't have to get it again.
Right, and that was another thing that came out of our review, is that we did go with like a minimum three-lot, uh, three-acre lot size as well.
So on that, if you're looking for kind of more of a determination, I mean, I'm willing to do a poll of the board to see if they feel it's a, that a variance would be required, but again, just because the word shall is in there, it kind of pushes it to me that it's a, a variance would be needed. So the other notes I had on the review, a lot you've already touched upon, was in the aquifer district, obviously trying to keep septic systems out of the, out of the, that area if you possibly can. It sounds like you're trying, you're willing to do that as much as possible. Obviously, there's some additional requirements, like, again, impervious surface maximum, the recharge of any surface water on site. So just wanted to make sure you follow or look at that.
Yeah, and I know that Mr. Lang, who customarily uses stone dirt edges for the roof in filtration, which usually takes, you know, some of the arid areas well.
In this section in particular, we have more requirements or specific requirements on the septics.
Yes.
Versus some of the others where it's just TDS approval.
Yes.
So it's something you're all on that. There's also the likelihood, so stormwater management plan, that's in our subdivision That section indicates that applicant, again, shall provide for and maintain methods that eliminate any detrimental downstream effect of the property. For significant or complex developments, the board shall require a stormwater management plan to address these issues, and there's thresholds that we list out. Where any, where the following conditions are proposed are present. A, cumulative disturbed area exceeding 30,000 square feet. B, construction of a street, road, or driveway. C, disturbed environmentally sensitive areas, and/or D, disturbed critical areas. So it seems like we definitely meet the requirement of one or more of those. I'm sure we have a waiver outlined in that. I did not print that part of it.
On page 33.
Thank you. That's what I was getting to. So we do have under 10.3, number two, there is an option for a waiver on that.
And specifically, Mr. Chairman, could you tell me which criteria you feel we are going to overstep on that one?
Accumulative disturbed surface area exceeding 30,000 square feet. I'd have to check and see.
Well, would C qualify as that?
They would all be, all the lots would not exceed, I mean, individual lots would not exceed 30,000 square feet.
But cumulatively.
Even though they're disconnected?
It says cumulative disturbed surface specifically in the...
But there's also, so the next one is pretty, pretty broad, so, construction of a street, road, or driveway, so we definitely have driveway. And then I'd go back through and reread our definition on sensitive areas and critical areas, but...
I just want to know how to properly describe that for the waiver request.
Yep.
One of the things that I noticed in reading over the application was that NA was checked off on numbers 10, 11, and 13, basically talking about erosion control measures and such. such. It states in here that materials and methods of construction shall conform to our subdivision regulations, and that was checked off as NA. Erosion control measures being installed prior to the disturbance of site surface areas, that was checked off, NA. And I didn't know specifically why those would be not applicable to the construction being going on.
Well, I think because there's no work construction that's followed. Obviously, if he gets into construction on lot three, he'll put the appropriate, he'll fence up at the weapon bucket. But typically, that's what you're trying to test as a resource, like things of that nature. That's just customary with home construction, which we assume would be controlled and monitored and etc.
Right. Well, and I guess that's why I was wondering why it was in NA when those would be being followed, correct?
Well, I am happy to change that.
I just was checking because it's like, do we not need to make sure that these are done?
Yeah, no, we checked A because we were assuming that's going to be inspected by the building inspector, and that's just customary.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So last major thing I kind of had was going back to the very definition of a lot envelope. In our definition, which would affect potentially Lot, Propose Lot 3 and Propose Lot 5, is where it indicates the 30,000 square foot contiguous area that's for the building envelope shall not have any areas of 50 feet or less at the narrowest point. So when you're looking at Lot 5, it might be, you might have enough contiguous area in that upper part.
Right.
But that bottom section might be upland soils, but it's not. It just pinches off. And the same thing with Lot 3, that dogleg part is, I believe, is under 50 feet. And so that generally doesn't kind of get to go towards the contiguous area. And that one, if you take that off, you might be on the edge of having enough square footage.
Yeah, and I will double check because I'm fairly certain my designer was aware of that.
Okay. So it might be somewhere, it's reduced by like, maybe Lot 3 gets combined into Lot 4 and you shift some lines. The very last question I have, I'm sorry, was the, there's two wells shown on the current parent parcel, Lot 1.
Yep.
And I know you show the well radius on one of those. Is that second well in use or abandoned? It kind of brings us to it.
Yeah, I don't know that, but I would presume whatever it was used for, it will be the...
Okay.
And they'll just use the one existing well that I believe is tied to the house with the water service to the contiguous area.
Okay. Because normally, on the newer lots, the full well radius is supposed to be within the lot, which the other four are shown that way. That was kind of my concern, because the lot that does have the well radius is right next to the road. The other well, you probably don't have the 75 feet from the next parcel.
Right.
So if you can just confirm that, that'd be great. That kind of goes through everything I had in my notes on the review. Let anybody else speak, otherwise we'll open it up to the public hearing.
Question on, so Lot 5, I notice the test bit's down at that bottom section, but the well is up at the top section. So I'm just curious really, where is the proposed building area supposed to be on that lot?
Well, I think the building envelope area that meets the design criteria
Right.
is going to be in the upper section.
Okay.
But I believe because of the setbacks and the fact that, you know, he could, if he wanted to, put a house in the lower section and run a well line, or a water line from the well down here. Or could put the house up and back if somebody wants a private, more private situation, and just run the septic line. You just have to put clean out.
Okay, so that's the proposed proposal on that, is to be separate from one or the other, meaning septic or the well.
Right, yeah.
And I'm just, I'm not, unless I'm not seeing it, proposed driveways on...
No, Steph brought that up, and we had not shown proposed driveways at this time. We will certainly add that. Not a problem.
All right. If you don't mind, I'll, I'm going to open the public hearing. So the way public hearings work is first we'll have anybody that is speaking for the development or towards the development come up first, then anybody against, and then anybody that just kind of has general questions or comments, things like that. Again, if you can just state your name and address.
Frank Gonesales, 113 Kelsey.
Could you, excuse me, please move the microphone closer to you because recordings are important. Thank you.
On the town building codes, I understand that it's a 200-acre, 200 by 200 square foot lot required for each lot?
There's two measures. One, you can either show 200 by 200 square foot contiguous area or 30,000 square feet of contiguous upland soils.
Okay. Are there any variances on these lots, or are they all continuous?
Are there any variances requested?
For example, is 200 feet of roadway required anymore?
Yes. Yep. 200 feet on a, each lot would have to have 200 feet of frontage on a Class 5 or better road.
And what's the length on Lot number 5, Kelsey?
200. Exactly.
200, exactly.
And three-acre zoning, is that through up the town now?
Nope. That's for the Aquifer Protection District specifically. So there's a Aquifer overlay map that shows a couple of areas of aquifers in the town. And that zone specifically has more stringent zoning with larger lot size.
You've answered, well, you've answered a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak or ask a question?
My name is Gil Stevens. I own 208 Mill Pond Road, the old house that used to be Fred Yorx, directly across the road from the farm. And my daughter, I bought some bags. I guess that's Lot 5, the L-shaped one back there. Daughter butts and all that. I'm an old soil engineer. I look at soils maps. My brother was state hydrologist for 30 years. I believe the old county maps show most of their soils as being a Hinckley soil. Now, I realize this is probably one to the board. I think the Aquifer District, they found out based on the soils maps and probably contours, Hinckley soil, it's gravel pit soil. If you dug it, my folks in Stratum owned a gravel pit. When we dug it, test it, it perks. The water drained out of that hole in 30 seconds. The hole was maybe 24 inches deep. It appears based on what I've just heard, they're digging two feet and hitting seasonal high water tables, probably it shouldn't have been in the Aquifer District. But I understand someone else drew these up, just like flood planes have been drawn up. Basically, they were drawn up on demand and very short notice. They obviously couldn't get them precise, just like where I live right across the old farmhouse on 221 Mill Pond Road. I had to go and get a Walmart because the flood plane showed it. I'm on a no. They showed the water going halfway around the no, then stopping. Water doesn't do that. It would go the rest of the way around. And I think the same issue is probably here. I don't know these folks. I know a lot of them are. I'm in favor of this. Ideally, this would be a horse farm. And I think she would like to have been one. Unfortunately, land in New Hampshire in this area now is too valuable to be a horse farm. I just wanted to throw that out there. I think if they go to the board, they should talk about maybe, they have soils to have a lot, but Hinckley soil is a gravel pit. And you wouldn't get water at two feet. It truly was Aquifer soil.
Yep.
That's all I want to mention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
An item that Mr. Stevens had just touched on, so sometimes that can occur with wetlands as well. Sometimes they're shown on a map as one type, or they're not shown. But onsite surveys show a different type or show that they're there. And that's also part of, part of this process is, obviously onsite determination, when you're directly there, is a lot different than any other type of measurement. So there are processes for that, and sometimes that's part of a variance request as well. All right. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak for or against? Come on up.
My name is Shirley Cooper. I bought Lot 1, Laurel House, 205 Mill Pond Road. And I just, the existing house and buildings, outbuildings on Lot 1, are they planning on staying, or is Lot 1 going to be staying pretty much the same as it is?
Good question. It wasn't discussed. There was no mention during the applicant's presentation about any changes occurring to any of those structures.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that's not proposed, but...
Okay.
Mr. Smith, sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I can address that. Mr. Langdon does intend to keep the existing house and outbuildings.
Yeah, thank you.
I am for this. I know Laurel. Like the last gentleman just said, would much rather have it as a farm. I would too. Love the horses and the country setting, but it's not how things go anymore. So it is what it is. So if it works for her, and I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak, for or against questions? All right. So I'll bring it back to the board for any further discussion. We have a few items that DAPK, we've developed that would have to get some clarification on or not, so. Anybody else have any questions?
Ed.
Oh, sorry.
This is a minor concern, but on Lot 1, I am noticing there's overhead power running through Lot 1 that looks like it services Lot 142. If that lot is sold, is there any easement protection against that overhead power? Or do you know about it?
Yes, there is. And it's actually noted on the recordable subdivision plan, Note 4A, which is essentially the order of record. And under A, he references that utility easement as well as the recording.
Thank you.
Ed, what's the order of doing things tonight? Are we addressing the waiver request now, or are we...
Go back.
Postponing that until after we see what the zoning board does?
I would entertain, so that the public hearings, and there are some items that it's likely that the plans are going to get revised, I don't want to close the public hearing. I prefer to keep it open just in case the plans change drastically. I can always reopen, I guess. So if I haven't done it already, I'll close the public hearing. So on that, yes, now we can act on, we can act on the waivers now, which makes, would make sense to go ahead and to do that, because depending on what we do is there. DAPK may choose to either do that and a zoning variance. So let me read that variance, the waiver, just had it. So we have a waiver request. At Langdon Construction LLC, seek the following waiver to the town Nottingham subdivision regulations, Article 16, Section 3.2G for the above case submittal. A waiver is requested for the cited section that requires soils data be provided for the project and depicted on the plans. We feel the waiver is justified as the lots are all oversized with a minimum of three acres. No drainage analysis is required nor contemplated for this frontage subdivision. And finally, depicting the NRCS soils would not result in any additional beneficial information to the board to be able to act on the plan.
And I guess I could add to that, Mr. Chairman, we also provided with the NRCS soils.
Correct. We have that here if anybody would like to see it.
The map's probably four pages.
So it's just, yeah, that's... So we have the data available, it's just not on the plan, basically.
Mr. Chairman, would you like a comment now or after the motion?
No, sorry, I'll take a comment and then we can make a motion.
The statement that the waiver is justified as the lots are all oversized, minimum of three acres. Lot 2 is exactly three acres. Lot 4 is exactly 3.02 acres. And if any of these lots are rearranged in the plans, that might make a difference too.
Yeah, I don't anticipate that the lot lines will be adjusted.
Is there any other discussion? And Mr. Smith, I know you'd mentioned it before, but is that, would you consider this kind of a hardship at all, or is it something that's, the data's available and would it be very difficult to add?
Well, we obviously have the data.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like I said, I really have no heart for this.
Okay.
It lives or dies. We're just trying to dot I's and cross D's.
And with the comment on there about the no drainage analysis required, that could be, I'd have to go back to the Aquifer District again to see that it does impose some stricter requirements. So my opinion is if it's available, and it's not extreme hardship, I'd like to see it on there, just to have it as one more piece of data. But that's only my opinion, so definitely entertain a motion from the board. Anyone like to make a motion? We need a motion to act one way or the other.
Mr. Chairman, personally, at this time, I think a motion on this would be premature. Yeah, I agree. I'm comfortable moving ahead on this, particularly where the zoning regulations say shall. And really, my opinion is it should go to legal for interpretation.
So we can, one of our options is to continue to a date and time certain on the motion?
We can.
I think we're at that point anyway, both for the waiver and for the plan in general, is to, it seems like a continuation seems to be the way with some of the items we have to follow up on, would be the better option at this point. So I'll entertain a motion for both the waiver and the case. Mr. Smith, before I do that, if we do continue it, is there a date and time that works best for you all that's...
Well, I guess...
Gives you time to kind of revise and...
Yeah, and obviously, our first act is going to be to review the code enforcement and determine if, you know, he concurs that the variance is going to be a requirement. I suppose if his answer is no, we could see you on the 26th. Obviously, if his answer is yes, we would, you guys would likely want us to get through that proceeding first.
Well, and would you be going before the ZBA at this point? I haven't heard a yes or a no at all on that.
I presume so, yes.
So then you need time to go before the ZBA anyway.
That's what I was saying, yeah. Unless the code enforcement...
So the 26th is going to be...
Unless the code enforcement officer has. No, that's what I say, unless the code enforcement officer has the opinion that this can be done with without.
Okay.
Would it be more beneficial to you if the board took, again, like a show of hands, vote as to whether we feel that section would apply?
That's fine.
Because I don't want to send you to the code enforcement officer and then have it just come back here where we then to say, yes, you have the ZBA for it and just delay it and cause any undue delays one way or the other for it. So without, unless there's further discussion on that or comment as to not doing it, I'd like just a show of hands of all those that feel that the zoning ordinance variance would be required for the hydrogeologic study. Give this section. It is Oxford District, so it's Article 3.5, I believe. The pertinent language says hydrogeologic study A within the Oxford Protection District, hydrogeologic study shall be required at the applicant's expense for developments involving the subdivision of three lots or greater. Open discussion for a second and then I would just like to see a show of hands that feel yes, variance should be required or requested or, and I'll skip the no's.
I'm going to say no.
So I'll take the. Throw me off, Gary. So all those that feel variance shall be required, please say aye or raise your hand, sorry. You're not voted tonight, but I can take it because it's a formal motion. All those that feel variance is not required? And did you vote?
I didn't.
Because you'd be on the zoning, so sorry. Ms. Bascom is on the zoning board, so she's abstaining from the vote. And I vote, I would vote yes as well. So I think that would push a majority in that direction. We can still talk to the building enforcement, but.
We'll have to coordinate.
Again, it's just the shall and the zoning ordinance that kind of, for me, ties our hands. So that said, is there a date and time specific that would work well for you all? Our next, so we have February 26th. After that, our March meetings are kind of off because of town elections and in-town meetings.
Can I ask, Joanna, when, can I ask for two dates when the next available zoning board agenda is and secondly, what would be the filing deadline?
The next evening. And the deadline is March 2nd.
Okay, that seems, that seems very durable.
So what was the date? I'm sorry.
I would assume it would have to be after the 17th of March because that would be the zoning board adjustment.
Yep. And Joanna, I know our first meeting in March is our, no business for officers. Our next meeting, I think we're doing one on 3/25.
Yes.
So again, it's an odd month for us, but.
That would be the one we would hope for.
Yep. And do we have a lot of cases that night currently?
None.
Perfect. So 3/25 is acceptable to Dapkin. So if anyone would like to make a motion to continue to 3/25 at 7:00 PM. So we would want to continue the waiver consideration as well as the case.
And we will provide the additional waiver for the, for the variance rate.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue case number 20-001-SUB, including the waiver request for March 20th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, 7-0. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. If you're shuffling out, just any conversation, just make sure the door's shut. Again, the recording in here is pretty poor. You're welcome to stay, though.
Good support for this.
I'm just going to give a minute for everyone to. All right. The next item on the agenda is a joint meeting with the school board representatives. They're here to discuss future school plans. So I welcome you or both of you to the table. Welcome both. All right, if you can, just state your names and fire away and then we'll go over.
Susan Nelson, School Board. Abby Brown, School Board. And I'm with Paula Johnson as well, and the department manager, Colonel DePerey, Alston, who did this meeting. So we're really sorry about that.
We get paid anyway, so it's okay.
We have initially made requests at the end of the PIS and they were approved, so I think that's our first use of them. We're hoping down the road to use them a little bit more fully. The report we have right now shows about 30,000 and realize that some of them may be turned back for ordinance. What we've been doing, we have been on facilities of speech advisory committee and the board has had some studies done for the street, some basie, so can be renovating, can do renovation, or sort of things that we could be doing. We did hire an architect to come up with some concepts. So that is the concept that we have here in the lab. We have a warrant article that we proposed. We have some additional equity that's coming back to us from the city. It's called, it was initially called an infrastructure grant and it's 117,000, I think 117,202 or something like that. And we are proposing to use the majority of that to have architects be further work with engineers to get us shovel ready to apply for building. So it takes several months to get that ready. We would do in July. And we would be eligible for 30%. We would find out probably in December or January if we could be eligible. And then based on that, we would do a second warrant article requesting to build. And that's all predicated on, you know, what the board's determined with the plan that's going to be out in March. We have some renovations, as you can see, on that piece that's coming around. And we're thinking that possibly we could use some of our impact fees for those renovations for areas where we have high enrollment in our science labs, in our middle school level, and that's where our high enrollment is. So that's something that we're talking about, which would change the overall cost because we don't dispose. And the other piece of it is the preschool. We currently have a preschool in Northwood. There are three district SUVs. Stratford has decided they will no longer send their students to preschool there. And that comes into many conversations at all. Three boards have had at the joint board round, and I'm particularly about the value of having your preschool students local and not having to have to travel. And then the other piece of it is the cost aspect of it. We pay this year 160, 160,000, 600 students. And we feel we're not getting the full population enrollment in Northwood. No fault of their own, they have a lot of first students there, everything's just convenient for them. And Kathy can speak to this more so, the whole preschool requirement basically with the child mind for students that may have disabilities, so you have to reach out and do that. So it is a big cost and I think if we could do it openly, you would have some cost savings. We would have advantages for students themselves, that they be at the school and have benefit of all services. And then if we go into kindergarten, we don't have any teachers that are doing other stuff and so forth. But we don't have space right now, so part of the piece that's coming around, it has three classrooms for kindergarten, one classroom for preschool. And then on either side of the, the way would students bump out back and front to provide space for some of the student services that we're doing right now. Yeah, in the music room.
Well, I was just going to say that if we were to bring the preschool back into Nottingham, not only would we take care of the children that are federally required to take care of, three and four-year-olds that have difficulties, age-appropriate. We could also bring in peers, age-appropriate peers, that have no learning issues to be a good example. And also, they would be charged a tuition, so that would help defray the cost of the preschool, which we don't get that benefit when the children are born. And $160,000 plus whatever we would gain from having the children with tuition in could make up, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars, which is much more than paying them. So, you know, it would be helpful to have that. And also, the actual school benefits, education benefits, the children would find that they were comfortable there much earlier. I'm sure some of your parents, it's much more comforting to know that five years, chickens are in one building instead of spread out in different places and you have one place to pick them up and one place to drop them off and all those kinds of things. And children benefit from their families being comfortable too, so it's a win-win situation. So we think that we would very much like to have our preschool back, but we have no place to put it at the present moment.
Can I ask us down?
Yep.
Just one of the other thoughts we could maybe do, sort of things that we're trying to figure out, we could possibly do a modular type building on a slab for preschool and have that, you know, separated. But then it's just a little difficult bringing kids in and so forth for other services. So these are the things we're just going to be bantering about and trying to see if there are any other options around this as we build, if the town improves, as we build this application for the building, because they need to see the costs and guarantee maximum price and so forth. So it's pretty much where we are right now. We think that the impact fees could potentially again go toward the science labs because you have the higher enrollment. We have higher enrollment, this year there's kindergarten with the 48 to 60 students and we think that will continue. We've looked at, that Stratford study, we've looked at the NHOP, and they have some projections for 16% growth in Nottingham, 9%, we're looking at 9% of Stratford. So, you know, we're just trying to get a feel for what all of that will look like and maybe get your thoughts on possible impact fee uses. Again, we did get 27,000 that helped be used for the architects to get to that design and come up with some costs for the children project.
Sue, question, I wasn't positive by looking at that plan about, do you have a rough square footage of what your, what the proposed added spaces?
It was 2,000 square feet of renovation. 2,000 square feet of renovation, I think 13,000 renovation.
13,000 new?
Yes, so it would be those bump outs on the two-story wing. And it would be the wing on the back that would have the.
That are like brownish.
Kind of area. I know those are roughly the numbers, 13,000 and change, 2,000.
So Sue, are you saying these areas here are going to be where the buses now pick and drop off kids in the back?
We haven't that far yet.
No, but you're saying bump out in the back, so that, I'm just trying to understand how this all works. Because I don't, I apologize, but I don't quite see how this fits with what we have and where you're talking about what is going to be new.
Yeah, there's a little bump outs.
And I apologize.
That's okay, I'm sorry.
These?
Bump outs there, yeah, top and bottom and in the front here. And then this bumps out here. And then part of the project cost would be to move that little access road which isn't paved and we haven't allowed anyone to pave it because we don't want to waste money and ripping up. And so that would be moved.
So this is the backside of the school? So this is where the buses drop off and pick up currently?
They drop and pick up.
Parents.
Parents. You did, somebody went out back to do something with the kids. I've been there before for that. Okay, so a comment, when you had mentioned, because you brought up the, oh, the little trailer thingies there?
Modular.
Modulars, that's the word I wanted. When I was in Northwood, that's where I grew up, our classroom was huge. We had 52 in our class at the time, which was big for them, 26 in each grade. So they had to bring in modulars and they attached it to the school off to the side. So that is another option where you're putting them in the back anyway. They could, that could be, unless regulations have changed since, but so that they wouldn't have to be totally separate and walk through the elements to get inside the building. Just pointing that out as a.
Something we could look at. One of the concerns that we do have is the sprinkler system. 685.
And if we.
If we pop right up and attach this.
If we pop right up to the building.
Then we have to sprinkle the whole building.
The whole building. And if there's a little space, I don't know.
So the pieces that they're adding, they're designing it so that they're, I'm not even going to use the terms because I'll mess them up.
Fire-rated?
Floating?
Fire-rated?
Yeah, we have fire-rated doors and things right now, but the way they're actually attaching these things, they wouldn't be actually attached. And so it wouldn't create the whole need for the system. They did give us a cost for these things if you wanted, people had asked for an operable partition in the cafeteria. You know, that, I think years ago when they built the school, it was supposed to slide between the cab.
Right.
And the cab.
Yep.
Yeah, it would cost 162, 255. And then the generator would be 163,605. And the building sprinkler system would be 685,090. That's kind of where we're at right now. The back renovation would be 5,059, 5,059,690. But then there's also other fees associated with it that we'd be working on in 830, 837, 60 for civil engineering inspections, legal security. The law now requires you have an owner's rep and that would be roughly 30,000. So sort of where we're at right now.
So the proposed, the items on the backside, those are brick and mortar or are they modulars?
Definitely brick and mortar. Definitely brick and mortar. And there were the changes within the body of the school as well, renovations to rooms, moving of the music room. We lost our, we had a technology room, STEM lab. Basically, there's a computer room for the kids to go in, use the computers and have that class. And we had to take that out. So we took out, we spent about, we maybe could have tried to use our impact fees for this when we did this a few years ago. We just really weren't very satisfied with what we had, to be honest. Didn't have a lot of guidance around it, you know, as a board. So it may be a new split of thousands for that because we took down some walls right on the first floor where we had offices and where we had three spaces for students to come in, we had student services. We knocked those down and made a kindergarten room. And then we went over to the. And then we went over to the computer room and repurposed that for students that need OT and PT because everybody goes in the hall and the stairwells. Then we cut the teachers' room in half and we put the offices that we just placed in there. And then upstairs, there was a janitorial maintenance closet. And so we put a window into that and a new maintenance closet part of it. We put a big gate around. And so we still have some chemicals and things in there for cleaning supplies, but the rest of the room is used for kids to come and get services. And then there's another room, we'll have a room that goes up to the roof if you need to get on the roof. That's pretty small. And it's probably shown on there in the interior. And we have, we're doing services in there as well. So we've tried to, as well as services in the hall, you know. And we try to, we're trying to use the stage, we've got the storage off of there. So we're trying to use the stage for the right purpose. And it's kind of where we're at. We're finding we have storage issues and then also just space issues for students, for the services they need.
Have you looked at a mill van for storage?
We have a little shed, we got a couple of sheds and we put those in. We store, it's like the chambers and things like that that need to go into the gym. So those are, if you've got a good amount of space and things like that.
And, you know, it's much better to have them, you know, up against the wall in the gymnasium or in the cafeteria than bringing them out.
But I'm talking about as far as all your, the storage, you've mentioned, is that the deliberate of, over and over that storage was an issue? I'm asking if you looked at a mill van for storage to see if you could put the science stuff or whatever else that's not being used into those and free up some of your space?
When you say a mill van, do you mean the little pods?
It's the Conex, Conex boxes or a pod or something like that, yeah?
We have three or four storage areas outside of the building. They're not the official little pods or anything, but we've got one out behind the gym and a couple on the other side where that road comes around near where the nursery school and daycare. Yeah, daycare sector, so there's a couple over there.
It's a preschool, you're talking about the one to the other side, that is a preschool? All aboard preschool, yeah?
Yeah, a couple, oh, go ahead. Sorry. As it stands today, do you have any data on what the current, like, educational space square footage is per pupil? And maybe what our target is, like what the more appropriate target is? And then maybe where this work would put us in terms of capacity? Because obviously, we have to consider, maybe we're, this will get us ninety percent or eighty-five percent, but then as far as development approvals and other things like that.
So, capacity, some of the studies that we've been given is around five forty-five for the school. I don't have the square foot push-to-be right on, but we can get that to them. I know we have reports that show it, I didn't bring those.
I guess even just the, so what we have today for capacity, what our target would be? And then where that puts us, I guess.
And also, what we've tried to make six, seven, and eight function as a middle school. That capacity is larger than for the number of children. So, and it's one of those things that if you need that capacity, you know, and the lower, like the kindergarten needs a larger classroom for gross motor and the preschool as well, needs a larger capacity for gross motor. And all of a sudden, we're getting a lot of, since we've got a full-day kindergarten, we're getting a lot higher number of students in the first grade because they've come to our full-day kindergarten. You know, we used to have fifteen, sixteen in two kindergartens, morning and afternoon. And now we have like, I think it's sixty-three.
Trying to find our home before we go there.
I think it was five twenty-five on October first.
While you're looking that up, just to take a big step back, school originally built, what year, about?
Nineteen ninety-five.
Ninety-five, and then the last major kind of shift was probably about eight or ten years ago when it was kind of like when you reutilized a bunch of space in the school?
We started nickel and dime that, it hasn't been all at once.
Okay.
We did that four, three years ago, I said-
Three years put together, so.
But so we did all those changes, I just talked about.
Yep.
But I was just, the other day I was talking to a friend of mine who teaches in a middle school and she's the coordinator of all the computers and everything. And we were laughing about when I taught in East and we had art on a cart, you know, and this, that, and the other on the cart, you know. And I said, "Well, we have computers on the cart." She said, "Oh my, how do you do that?" You know, because every child, every time you go into the classroom, they have to take their computers off the cart. So each individual child has to take it off the cart, set it up on their desk, you know, log in, get all ready, which takes, depending on the grade level, probably five or twelve minutes depending on their age. And then, at the end, you have to do the same thing, closing them down, putting them back and everything. So, she said, "You're using half of your computer time for getting the kids up and down on the computer." She said, "That's ridiculous." And I said, "Wow." That's the way I ask me right now because we don't have a space. But I hadn't thought of it that way, so.
That's true. There are definitely numbers that are good, they're asking for this to happen because of the state case based on square footage per student. And we do have capacity numbers. I know it's right around five forty-five. We'll get those numbers and see if I know what you mean.
Has anybody, I mean, not the five million plus or whatever, I have different ways to add a structure without brick and mortar because that's probably the most expensive of all. Like I see Co-Brown, they just put that new building up. I mean, that's a wood structure. I don't know what it cost them, but looks good size. And then, like these, a lot of people are putting additions on or building buildings now with the freestanding, like metal. I mean, they're beautiful inside and out, but I mean, probably half the cost of this, so.
So freestanding, separate from the building?
They're like, it's just, it's a metal building, basically. That, like I just, a place that I work with, they just put up a thirty-thousand-foot freestanding building and they paid approximately about two-point-one million for it. Like completely done with classrooms and it's a training center, so, very nice. I mean, I just, other options to at least look at.
We can ask about that.
Yeah, and I can get you some information if you want, you know.
We're gonna have another community forum, I believe it's March third, so we can get more input and questions and thoughts around it. We did one September fourth and got feedback on that and then tried to do some designs. And we had, I think we had four concepts at that point in September and it's just a little bit now, so it's definitely in the process. But we definitely were, were trying to use these impact fees because we do feel we have, that we have higher enrollment, particularly in certain grades. And we understand it can't be used for programming, but we do have, right now, we typically have three students, three grades per class, you know, so grade one, two, and three. And I know back when my kids were in school, there was a short period of time there where they combined some grades. It really was, my person does not feel that it was well-done because they were getting curriculum out of order and so forth. And each seventh graders were getting eighth grade grade from them, next year, eighth grade went to seventh. So they compressed that at the seventh and eighth grade level. So we've done now grades two and three, instead of having three classes, we have two because they were lower, you know, those particular classes. But as they move up, if you wanna try to continue with the middle school piece where they rotate the, some ups and downs, then you won't be able to do that. So these are the things we're trying to be finding solutions to. And it is, and we do, you know, do see that the enrollment is beginning to take up. Some of the houses that are going, the sizes of them, it doesn't seem as though those are the homes for empty nesters. They're quite, you know, the ones on the Peace Road and so forth, it's been pretty, it's pretty large. And also, it's on five tonight, it seems to be a fair amount of that, you know better, but coming up with one fifty-six, you see one, two, three, you know, maybe six or seven on the other side of the road. So it seems maybe not necessarily be the capacity subdivisions anymore to put in Maple Ridge, but we've got a lot going on, just maybe three, four at a time. Is that, do you see that, or is?
I, my question, or the way I'm seeing, or hear, what I'm hearing and thinking about is the impact fees. And so, so what, and what I'm thinking about is, so what percentage of this whole proposal might be capital improvement? And then, that's not an easy question to answer, I know that.
I think that the, we're putting in a lab on the front, so it would be the sixth-grade lab right here. And so we have, we have a couple of labs right here, so some renovations to those, we're thinking perhaps? Could be impact fee. And if we could do something, the preschool piece, I mean, it does bother me that we're spending a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and sixty thousand for preschool. I think we could consolidate here, do a good job and, you know, hopefully save. But, so that's maybe that piece, since we're gonna see increased enrollment there, that's something we could use impact fees for. And the kindergarten classes, we expanded, but we just did it by working internally and renovating because we had that, we bumped up to sixty students. So right now, we've got four kindergarten classes because we used to have just a half-day and we do think, right, we have four, but they were half-day, we rotated through two classrooms. So, those are the areas that we're thinking perhaps could be impact fee, does that sound?
Well, but my question is, the kindergarten was added, so that was a new entity, if you will.
The full day?
Yeah, so, I have a problem with thinking of that as capital improvement because it's a new, a new program.
Well, it wasn't really a new program because the income had still been there. But is it still considered a new program just when you?
Well, when you increase the time that the kids are there, if it's full-time now, so.
So if the school goes an extra half an hour a day, then that's a new program?
Is it half hour or is it four hours?
No, 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 I'm just asking because one of the things-
What I'm getting at is I think maybe it's the percentage of the capital improvement that needs to be tried to figure out.
Yeah, but I was just asking that because we're talking about maybe adding time to the school there. So, what does, how does that play if your children are going to school a half-day or more a day?
I didn't say it was an easy question to answer.
There are more questions than there are answers. I've come to find that.
One of the things I'd be cautious about too, though, is adding kids into your school purposefully, like the preschool, until you have the space for them.
Oh, well, we haven't planned.
Okay.
Okay, we might be forced to that because Stratford has pulled out of the preschool starting next year. And so, they're two of us sharing that cost now.
Well, again, that shouldn't be, that lack of Stratford's money shouldn't be falling to the two of you that are already under contract for what you've been paying.
Well, we pay for a percentage of, through your average of the children?
Yeah, we were paying, there was a while when we had seven kids in the program, we were paying almost a hundred and seventy thousand because our three-year average kind of smoothing things out, so. And then there are students there that have student needs and there are others that do not. And that's where I personally see, when you have a program and one town can have thirty kids there and have the benefits of having thirty kids there in their community and another town has sixteen or fewer and your costs are just about the same, and this year we decided to just split the cost. And we were having to pay rent of twenty-five thousand in, to Northwood, but three of us were paying it. But Northwood just said, "No, let's skip that this year until we can figure out what's happening." So, we are trying to work with them to-
And didn't you say that was a federal program? So, do not, federal monies go towards that?
Well, federal monies go to all schools, everybody. But special aid, special education money-
Right.
For those students, we get some of that. But right now, there is the Medicare, Medicaid money. We're not getting any of that and you still need to deliver the services to the students.
So, we do get IDEA money. It's broken down to preschool and the other, our K and A school. Our IDEA money is about three thousand, roughly three thousand. It's on the D E A website, there is a report for that too. You can consolidate and like, we were consolidating at the S A U, so all of our monies are rolling together with the other two districts. Stratford also said we wanna see our IDEA, IDEA money ourselves. We want to understand where it's going. So those are all costs or monies that we receive. We get about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand in IDEA money that's also managed by the S A U. So, and that's consolidated with Northwood. And then we have an additional problem with that because towns that don't have their own high schools, they're taking those IDEA funds from high school and giving them directly to the district where the high school is. So Dover got some of our high school money, Co-Brown didn't get any. Our high school money went to the Northwood School District. So it's getting really, there are a lot of little things happening, they're very odd. But bottom line, we get about a hundred and fifty-eight, a hundred and sixty thousand in IDEA money intended for special students, special services. The S A U determines where those go and those are things that we could take, we could use like three thousand dollars for preschool. Those are things that would follow just like our budget.
When you mentioned the numbers too, does that, is that inclusive of transport?
We also have a separate contract for transportation through, and a special contract, so that gets filled back to us as well, so that would be additional.
It's separate from that number? So, can we assume that if it wasn't from here to Northwood, that it's a lower contract or, I mean, do we just-
I did ask that question, they said they weren't charging-
They can't give us a number?
They weren't charging an additional fee to bring the kids from Nottingham to Northwood. It's just the time, you know, the three-year-olds on a bus. So if a child is identified, they will get a bus and the bus will take them. And we do take, I think it's Durham, Durham Transportation that we use for student, for student services of that type. And it is Dale, Katie, and that's all local. We pay for it all, it's just a question of whether it's in our budget, whether it's coming through a grant that's managed somewhere else, whether we can bill back for it. But one way or another, we are, as a district, paying for it, for it all.
So if you look at it, if you crudely say ROI, so return on investment, but you have your non-tangibles, which are like, my time on a bus, being out of town for local families. So that always doesn't have a monetary value, but it has a separate value. And then you have the contracts, the busing contracts and things like that, which, again, don't know if there is a difference if they were keeping them in town versus transporting them out.
Would they, would they go on a regular school bus then? So that would still be that separate bus?
It's depending upon the level of service, I, we have to probably, really, that's something we have to think about. Would we do that? I don't know about when the three-year-old, four-year-old on a bus was K to A.
So that, that contract wouldn't really change then at all? It just would be the-
Well, the distance would be shorter.
Well, that, but the, I said contract, so that contract wouldn't change. Did you, had you said that some of the kids are not within Nottingham that we are responsible for?
Well, homeless students. And there's, and there's a formula, like whether the child became homeless in Dover and they found a place to live there in Nottingham. Dover and Nottingham split the cost of that child's education in the bus, okay? And if they started out here in Nottingham and went to Dover, the same is true. So, if you notice in our budget, we have, we have a line for transportation for homeless and that's where that comes in.
Okay, I didn't understand that at all.
So take a big, big step back, so, I should thank you. So thank you all for coming and bringing us up to speed because obviously, so as this board, we're responsible for setting the impact fees and doing the studies, we did that last, I think, a year ago, might've been two at this point, to reevaluate those and- have been two at this point, to reevaluate those and, and change them and re-adopt them. So it's our board's purview to, now the town passed them to set the D R M out, and we have to justify them. So appreciate it. And all the studies and things would be used the next time we, we have to evaluate those again.
Is five years?
I think it's actually seven. I think we did ours in five the last time, just to stay ahead of it. But there's an expiration date of them, which is, I think, five years. So, so there's that piece of it. And again, what, what they could be used for and things like that. So I know we had opinions from the professional that did them for us, Mr. Mayberry, as to what they could be used for. And again, it's not general repairs, but it's other needs that can be tied back to development. I don't know that we've had full build-out on some of the larger plans that were approved. I think Maple Ridge and Rocky Hill, I think is all, that's all done. Maple Ridge, I can't remember if that one's fully built out or if it's, it's got some left, I believe. But it's, it's getting closed, so.
It's still in the process.
Yeah, so you should be seeing the fall in, back to that, that development coming in. So as part of the study, the develop, the, Mr. Mayberry showed pretty, a few times that newer housing generally has a higher student ratio. So that's what he uses in some of his calculations, is that when we have, you know, newer houses, you tend to see a higher ratio of, of children in those houses. So you can kind of use that to tie back into, see where, as these are built, you can go back and see how that really plays out. And if, if those numbers are correct. And again, that's why we, we reevaluate that every number of years.
And if any of you would like a tour of the school so you can see where we're short of space and what our needs might be, all you have to do is either call the school and talk to Mr. Sousa or get in touch with Sue or I.
I just have one ignorant question for you. My ignorance. Is preschool, is that for any person in Nottingham? Any underage, any preschool child?
It would, it would be.
Just special needs?
Okay, if we have a special needs classroom, okay, in Nottingham, and we have seven special needs students, we want at least fifty percent of the class to be typically developing students. So that would be room for fourteen. But then you could say, if you have two adults in the, in the classroom, you could go up to like sixteen or eighteen. So there would be a limited number available.
And we're not required by the state to have preschool?
No.
We aren't required to have the child fund to provide those services.
And we have to provide the services, but we don't have.
For the special needs ones?
Yes. So we, we have to place the.
Thanks for straightening me out.
Well, that's, that's okay. And also, all the studies, I'm a retired educator, so I read all the time. That's one of my biggest faults. You find me on, in the book. But they're saying that we cut special needs for children about fourteen percent if we get them and take care of them in third and fourth grade.
So that's another one is return on investments that you can't really say, but you can say that.
It's not like widgets.
Here's our cost for a special needs student that is in grades three through six. So if we're able to inter, intervene earlier and prevent them from being, needing that service at those grades, there's that savings. But again, it's a, wishy-washy number. It's a soft number, yeah. That's a better way to say it.
So right now, yes, in, in this step-by-step preschool, there's seventy-two students there for the three districts right now. Twenty-six of them are identified, forty-six are what they call the community students. Yes. So while they're striving in this model to have this kind of one-to-one ratio, it really isn't fully, not fully matched.
Fifty-fifty at all. It's forty-six and twenty-six. For Nottingham kids, it is eight
and eight. But, but they're in classrooms where it's obviously not going that way. So we have asked for the administration, of course, in the next several months to research preschool models, cost effectiveness, you know, quality of programs, things like that, to see what we can do to accommodate as many kids as possible. Because as I say, we're paying a significant amount of this. I tend to sometimes, I always try a little bit of dollars, to be candid with you. I have that background, and I want to be cost-effective as well as quality. And I'd like us to have as many kids have the opportunity in our, in our community as wanted. I don't think we should force kids into preschool at age three or four, as wanted. But we can see that the other town is benefiting from having those thirty kids there. It would be nice if we could, we could do that, too.
I mean, preschool, could you have, I mean, preschool just, so anybody that has kids, two years old to six is first grade, right? So could we eventually have like five hundred kids in a preschool?
No. And, and we're going to do two-year-olds, three and four. Our children go to a child fund. And at which point, you could find speech issues, hearing issues, vision issues, basic learning issues. And so those are the students that you want to do early intervention.
Now, is that all communities throughout the state?
All communities, yes.
Okay. Interesting to hear.
And, and it's, it's a federal guideline that we have to educate three and four-year-olds of special needs. That's a federal guideline. So we have, you have to do a child fund, child search, whatever you want to call it, to evaluate.
Some of those services can be rendered at a person's home, though, if they can't make it to school, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we do, we pay for services.
Into the home. All right. And are the kids in school all day or?
No, no, no. And they don't go five days a week.
Okay.
So you can, when you have a preschool classroom, you could have three-year-olds going Tuesday and Thursday, and four-year-olds going Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or some such configuration. And I'm not sure which the best configuration is. Maybe you could even have a morning and afternoon session for maybe the four-year-olds. I don't, I don't know. I talk kindergarten, but I haven't talked preschool. And so those are things yet to be evaluated. But we could place in our program more than just the special needs children.
But the ones that, that don't have special needs, is the town paying for those as well? Or is that?
Well.
We are. We're paying one hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
But the parents also pay a certain portion of that.
Big, small amounts vary, depending.
I don't, I don't know.
For both, for both children with special needs and without, or just the ones without?
The ones without. Special needs children who are required by federal law.
Right, okay.
So when you're saying children without, where its parents are paying some amount of money, do you mean, do you mean there's like an enrollment, like parents can choose to send their children here?
Yes, yes.
If, if the town provides it, or is that regardless of where, so even though it's in Northwood right now?
I think Northwood has filled up all the slots that way. Okay? If they were here in Nottingham, Nottingham students would get first choice in spots. You know, and then maybe other children could attend if there was space. I don't know how we would include that.
We need to look at this whole program.
That's a way to try to maximize capacity.
Yes.
We do three and four-year-olds. We would, right now, it's a four-day program, but we pay as teachers for five days because they use the Friday planning day. So there, there are five days.
What, what's she had there?
Is there, I've seen one classroom shown on the concept for now. Is the idea that with that flip-flop, the Tuesday, Thursday, the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, that you would, because you say we have sixteen students now?
Right.
And you're, you mentioned like, there's potentially more out there that just are not utilizing it currently. Is there still flexibility if all of a sudden there's an influx and you double that? Is that?
But see, you would end up, I know in Kingston, they do a lottery.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I taught in Kingston for a number of years.
That's where my wife teaches now, but, yeah.
Does she go to teach at the Bucky School?
She does, yeah.
They're for twenty-six years.
So it's, you, you can still get that one classroom shown if there is influx and then?
We have to a half-day for, for a couple of hours for three-year-olds and then four-year-olds. Split it that way. And then you may have to start punching into some of these other spaces.
Okay, that is my question.
You know, these are a room here specifically for enrichment. And I think ultimately, it would be used for enrollment if we need to. So it's right across the hall.
Okay.
And we're adding the tech director area to repair because we don't have that right now with all the Chromebooks that we've got in and being used. So there are these areas in here. But I think you can repurpose, repurpose this enrichment room, obviously, for enrollment. It would have sufficient square footage to do that.
And something that, a couple of people at town have talked to me, one of the best meeting places for school board members is on the basket. If you ever want to talk to a school board member, we all need food and we get nailed rather often in our basket. So people have asked me why we wanted to do a building piece. And I said, "Well, we think it's the best," you know, "it's something that's got a long shelf." Like, you know, modular has what, eighteen years, maybe twenty years. And by the time twenty years come, it's in pretty tough shape. You just have to drive to bring it and look at those four things. They're sharp work. But, and another woman said, "Oh, no, 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 no." I talked to this other woman another day, and she was saying that she wanted it so her children would be safe. She was worried about her kids going to school in a tin can. You know, that was her language, that anybody could get in there.
Who wanted to.
Which I hadn't really thought of a modular in that way. So I, I think that might be a more difficult sell to some people than other people.
Yeah, I mean, what's that, I can hear it from her, from her, you know. So, and then the other piece of it is, we're looking to evaluate our cost structure at the S A U. Because with Stratford, in or out, we power these costs. We, we pay forty percent of the S A U right now. So we will be, hopefully, we do hope that we'll be able to do that individually together and do that cost structure, too. So I mean, there are opportunities for us to, you know, look at the cost and try to tailor them and maybe share resources with the town and so forth. For you guys, what, another capacity piece and those square footage of students?
Most, and just generally, where are we at now?
Yeah.
Maybe how far off from where we need to be are we? And does this get us there and beyond? So we have, or where does it get us to? So we know as a board, as far as incoming development and other things, if we actually are appropriately funding the impact fees.
We did say, we did speak with Amy Clark, who is from the Ministry of Education. She was civil engineer. She was doing this, the window. And we're also, again, for thirty percent, it's very competitive. So we'll see if we, if we're able to get it around. But she was saying, they have a fifty-year, roughly a fifty-year window that they're looking at. So I don't know how anybody could really build to a fifty-year window. But they're basically saying, if you build in the last fifteen years, we deduct those bad square footage for any future, if you, you know, if twenty years from now, we don't go and ask, they say, "What did you build in twenty twenty-one?" And they take that square footage off. So it's a little, a little details.
They want to take the square footage out in this building.
From what we, we're, we're, we think it was grandfathered. So we're going to have to do waivers for things that were added here in nineteen eighty-eight or something. So, yeah. Would you like to see the, I'm trying to think, what data would be helpful for us to send to you or if any?
So I guess that's why I take a step back, too, again, and just say, you know, so is there anything you need looking for from us? Obviously, you know, we, we had a study done, re-upped those numbers a year ago. So for me, I'd like to see, you know, would be, as this projects forward, to see how in line that is with our projections that were, the assumptions that were made. If it's pretty close, then I think we're probably on track with, with not having to do another study for that. But if, if we're widely off, then we might have to go back and think about those numbers. And then, so if you have any requests, I'd like to, if funds can be used, or if, you know, if you'd like a better interpretation of it?
Yes.
We can try to answer that. And if we can't answer it, we can always go back to the Mr. Mayberry and get his opinion, if he's, if he's available. I'm getting a, we don't know. I think he was the gentleman that pretty much did impact fees for the entire state. So if someone had impact fee ordinance, ordinance, he was usually the one that did the studies on it. So we could try to go back to him to see what his opinions are on those. He's given us a pretty broad opinion on it before.
So things we mentioned, like the, the last, things we've been breaking up and giving to you?
If you feel that'd be helpful, yeah.
That's the reason I mentioned percentage of capital improvement. It's a tough equation to come up with.
Right.
But if it's possible, that I think is maybe help to know what, what part of it is. Is capital or, or just extending what we already have?
Okay. So really try to work that capital piece versus programming or?
It goes back to growth and growth from, you know, the percentage of that from new development specifically. That's what the impact fees are for, to cover part of that.
Right, yeah, it's going to show the growth, the change, the impact that the newer students coming in has created, not programming and what you want to have. But having more students has made it difficult.
While the first grade, that was tripled to the second grade was initially kindergarten. And that was the start of that bubble. We also have a bubble in the fifth and sixth as a bubble.
I think evaluating the kindergarten, you know, we went to full-day kindergarten. And the question is, do you have higher enrollment because you went to full-day kindergarten? Or, you know, were the kids out there being sent to private kindergarten because their parents were at work and they couldn't do a half-day? But we never would see every year a bubble going to, so, you know, if there were twenty kindergarten kids, but ten of them went to private kindergarten because of that, then we would see a bubble every year going into first grade. And we weren't seeing that every year. So I think there are ways to look at the data to try to isolate, is it a programming offering increase or is it coming from enrollment? Because we haven't historically seen those bumps than we are now, then, you know. So we can look at all that and try to get some data, isn't that?
Does anyone have any questions?
Thanks again for your time.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you for coming up to speed.
Look at the staff fee, if we can.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks.
Next item on our agenda would be staff, board member updates. We'll start with Ms. Casella and then go around the board.
I don't think I have anything.
Updates. This next regional planning board, planning meeting, really excited because it's in the afternoon. And I probably can make that. So it's like three, three forty-five on the twenty-seventh. But I don't think there's a, an agenda yet. If I, yeah, thanks.
I have nothing.
The only thing I have is, thank you to the election workers, voters' checklist, whatever the specific title is, moderator, everybody that volunteered to, for the elections. Yesterday it was very smooth when I went through in the morning. So I appreciate that. It's a long day for a lot of people. So thank you for, for that piece.
Select board, just, we're talking about upcoming warrant articles at the town meeting. To quote the election, and that was about it, really. And other things that are, you'll hear that are coming. I don't know if they're, I don't think.
Is the warrant, is there, if I, on the agenda, I think, the warrant article is more discussion on, like, some of them on the twenty-fourth, is that right, I think?
Yeah, I have a list.
Thank you.
I have nothing. Thank you.
All set?
Nothing.
Nothing, except I did place my name on the ballot to run, to fill the second planning board position.
Great for you.
Thank you. And on that note, I'd like to thank Teresa Bascom for her service on this board. We'll miss, we'll miss her.
Thank you, Teresa. Thank you.
We have one more meeting before then, so don't, don't think that, let's thank you now.
I'll be here next, next meeting.
So I guess you won't be. So thank you very much. Yes, I, I agree then. Thank you very much to Ms. Bascom for, for great service here. You are staying on Z B A, correct?
I am staying on Z B A, yes.
Thank you for.
Thanks for that.
Thank you for volunteering for those.
Good luck.
Next item on the agenda would be, we have four sets of minutes to go over, Billy, I know Sue had sent through some, some edits on a couple.
I'm still going through December 11th.
And I apologize that the last meeting, I didn't take minutes to send you, it was, you had to listen to it instead.
I have, I have security.
Yeah.
From the video.
Proud that we got it running. So entertain either a motion on any and/or all of the minutes, if anybody needs more time with them, we could table some as well.
As chairman, I move to approve minutes for September 11th, December 11th, January 8th, and January 22nd.
We have a motion, and we have a second for Mr. Clough, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any objections, motion carries, did you abstain? No, seven all, I believe. That wraps up our agenda for tonight, let's have no further business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Second.
My last motion.
We have a motion for Ms. Bascom, her last for a little while on the board, apparently, a second for Mr. Anderson, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you, everybody, for your time tonight.
Teresa.
Adjourned at 8:54.
When, when do they come out, what the town?